Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. Mr. Yarver, will you please call the board? I'm sorry, I'm out of order. I'd like to ask Dr. Robert Exley of Smith State Community College to be giving our invitation.
Thank you, sir.
Shall we pray?
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning asking for wisdom and direction. We thank you for the opportunity to serve those that we serve. We thank you for the heart of service that we see in our board. Heavenly Father, we know that these times are times when your direction is more important than ever before. We humbly ask for your hand to be upon us today and throughout the remainder of this academic year. In thy name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Exley. Would everyone stand?
United Nations, through the pride of the United States of America, considered regardless of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Every member of the trustees has seen this agenda in advance of the meeting. In addition, it's been posted on our trustee's website and with a link at the open meetings site to Secretary of State. I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda. Is there a motion from Mr. Davis? Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Brown. Any discussion? There being none, all of us in favor of approving the agenda, submitted, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Item five on our agenda is the approval of minutes of our last regular meeting, the February 10th, 2016 meeting. Once again, the trustees have had these minutes sent to them in advance of this meeting. Have had time to review the minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. Caldwell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the minutes of the February 10th meeting? There being none, all of us in favor of approving the minutes of the February 10th meeting, please raise your hands. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Have individuals signed up? Since I think this is the first time any of these individuals have spoken to the board and give this public comment, I'll just refer to our bylaws in regard to that. That such comment shall be kept no more than three minutes in order that all persons have an opportunity to speak. Everyone has signed up in advance. And I would just ask when I call your name, call the individual's name that has signed up to speak at post comment, if you please come to the lectern here and state your name for the board and then go ahead and make your presentation. We'll have no discussion to speak of, but just mainly look forward to hearing your comments and remarks to the board. Mayor Gary Fuller of Opelika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Gary Fuller, mayor of the city of Opelika. And before that, I was a member of the Opelika City Council. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am a 2002 graduate of Southern Union State Community College. It only took me 38 years to earn a two-year degree. I don't recommend that. I'd like to introduce some folks that came with me. The president pro tem of the Opelika City Council, Patsy Jones. She's also a longtime educator. Also with us is the Auburn City Council Mayor Pro Tem, Ron Anders. Dr. Patsy Boyd Parker, longtime educator and member of the Opelika City School Board and member of the Opelika Industrial Development Authority. Former two-term mayor of Opelika and now the president of the Opelika Chamber of Commerce, Barbara Patton. Phoenix City Mayor Eddie Low could not be with us today, but supports our position. I'll be as brief as I can be, Mr. Chairman. I want you to put the hook on me. You voted to merge Southern Union, Chattahoochee Valley, and Central Alabama. And mergers by nature are complicated, time-consuming, and often complex undertaking. And to some of us, it seems that this process is being rushed regarding our colleges. And I'm not privy to the timetable, but there are not any reasons, legitimate reasons, that I know of to rush the process. Extensive public engagement and equitable representation are crucial to the efforts to merge if they're going to be successful. There's no question that details are important and system leaders must be candid and transparent for the process to work. I appreciate Speaker Hubbard, President Pro Tem Marsh on their successful efforts to establish this Board of Trustees. And I thank each of you for serving. I think it's pretty obvious, or at least it is to me, that the Opelika campus of Southern Union is the strongest dominant partner of the new regional college. Size matters, facilities matter, results matter. I left a packet of each of you's place at the table and you can read those at your leisure about what we're doing and what's going on in Opelika and Auburn. Of course, we had a world-class campus before in Opelika, but now, after another investment of $32 million, your money, my money, our money, to build the new Center for Advanced Manufacturing and the Center for Technology and Business, both of these buildings are open or in process of being open. And we've had friends and prospects, both in Opelika and Auburn and East Alabama, visit those facilities and they're the very best that you can find anywhere. Now, over the last 10 years, between the city of Opelika and the city of Auburn, $2 billion in capital investment, over 7,000 jobs. That's just in Opelika and Auburn. Many of these folks have gone to school at Southern Union, many of them pro tem. Southern Union is a great school to provide students for Auburn University. In fact, I think 17 percent of the Auburn transfer students back in 2014 came from Southern Union. I would like to ask that this board assert your influence and power to make a great decision. This is an important decision, not only for us, but it's important for our friends in Alexander City and Phoenix City. It's important for those students and it's important for those business and industries. I'd also like to invite you to come to Opelika. Dr. Burrow will be having a community meeting this afternoon at 5:30. Some of you, I don't believe, have been on our campus that love for you to see it. And then come to the meeting and hear what folks in Opelika and Auburn are saying about Southern Union. Thank you.
And Ron Preston, Alexander City Chamber of Commerce.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I know you have a lot on your mind and it's heavy. And I have a tremendous amount of allergies, obviously. But of respect for the adjacent communities that you serve. And so this is a hard decision and we realize that. What I wanted to share with you today was not all the selfish reasons that we want you located as a main campus and an administrative office at Alexander City. I think that's obvious by our outcry and by our presence here today. What I wanted to share with you is why does it make really good business decision for you to consider Alexander City for your main campus and for your administrative offices? And I'll give you three points. First of all, as a Chamber of Commerce, we established the Gateway to Education Fund 13 years ago, actually under the leadership of Susan Foy, one of your Board of Trustees. That, through its inception, has been funded and continues to be funded at well over $1.000,000, 1.3 currently. We offer $70,000 in tuition and fees to students from Benjamin Russell High School to the community college, and that is on an annual basis. We also self-advocated for tourism dollars, our own tourism tax dollars, excuse me, coming into our community that could be designated for whatever. We're so bought into education and we understand that the opportunity for rural children to excel is so important that we're swinging those tourism dollars into Gateway to Education. It's an amount of upwards of $80,000 a year into that fund to support continued education for our students in that area. I say all those things to you because this funding is provided not only from self-legislation and allocation from the state, but also from the business community at large. It is solely funded besides the taxation and tourism dollars from the business community. Down to the point that even our citizens will add $5, $10 to their utility bill to support this. So we're passionate about education, we're passionate about the future, we're passionate about workforce. And we know that our students that are within the region that we serve don't have additional opportunity. And we know that for fact because we do an entry interview and an exit interview of our Gateway Scholars. And we poll them to know, did you have other opportunity? And many of these students fall within the mission of the community college system. And that is to offer them a direction that isn't always a four-year degree. It's not always academic transfer, which I know is an important engine of the community college system. But the product that you're turning out is really within the region of the rural community that we serve. So our missions are aligned. And I tell you that as a good business decision because it's very important who you partner with for your success. You'll find a lot of latitude, you'll find a lot of support when it comes to your growth. So that's my first point to you. My second point is from a branding direction. I know that the colleges is reaching out over state lines. It's wonderful, we're working more as a region to solve workforce issues. And we're going to have to continue to grow that as communities and partners in education if we're going to attract business to the state of Alabama. And so from a marketing standpoint, the visual component alone, when you look at Alexander City and its central location to the region that you will serve, what better visual to hand to not only a student, but also to an industry to say, we're right here in the core and we can extend our arms and be to that region within an hour. So not only is it from a marketing standpoint and branding, my mind begins to get very excited as a marketing person about the latitude that you'll have to develop that, but it also makes sense financially for your administrators and for travel. And then the third thing that I would present to you is that from a facility standpoint, there are opportunities currently on the table. They've been made aware to Dr. Burrow. They are timely, so I would say that your timeliness with opportunities that we have locally to provide you with, not only just facilities to accommodate you, but with expansion opportunities and with opportunities to provide a revenue stream by being able to maybe lease out some of the additional space that you wouldn't require, student housing opportunity. A true campus, and so I paint a vision of not just stability, but growth. As you reach out for a region to serve a larger capacity, we embrace that idea. We think that's insightful, we know we have to do it as a state. And Alexander City, we want to serve the purpose of the state. Our goal is with you is that we turn out students who have jobs and they're not on the burden of the state eventually. So we have a common mission and I think that your locating the administrative offices makes good sense for those three reasons. I welcome any conversation that you might want to have about details of that. I'm only a phone call away, so thank you for your time and consideration.
Commissioner TC Colley, Tallahassee County.
Good morning. My name's TC Colley. I'm a five-term member of the Tallahassee County Commission. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you on a matter that's near and dear to my heart and in the hearts of the citizens of Alexander City, Tallahassee County, Coucia County, and other communities in our region. We, as a community, feel very strongly about the opportunity to be the home of the administrative headquarters for this new regional college. As maybe you know, Alexander City for over 100 years was the home of the world's largest manufacturer of team athletic apparel. And over the last several years, we've kind of undergone, undergone a lot of change, a lot of transition. And in many ways, Central Alabama Community College as it is now, and hopefully the administrative headquarters of the future facility, has been and continues to be a part of that transition. Number one, significance. For our community, you know, we're in the process of reinventing ourselves. We were looking at establishing our new identity. Not only is it Gateway to Lake Martin, but we'd also like to have as part of our identity being the home of this, the administrative building for this new two, administrative headquarters for this new two-year college. Also, as part of the relationship and this transition for our community, has been the role that the facility as it is plays within our community. It's not just a matter of saying that we have these facilities here, but we believe that these facilities and the relationships that we have with our community college is a role model for other campuses. One of the things that I looked at this whole situation, I'm like, well, gosh, how does this make sense for the board to look at us versus all the other areas? We're not the biggest, we don't have a larger student population, but we feel like we're the right type of community. A community where this administrative facility will not be seen as one of many jewels in a crown, but will be seen as a jewel in the crown, a critical facility. A facility that we've had great partnerships over the years and a community, a facility, an institution that we historically supported. We've talked about the Gateway Foundation and what we've done in terms of developing that as a way to increase the number of students going to the facility and also selfishly as a community, a way to help bolster our economic development. Also with us, the great relationships we've had in terms of support. We've had times in the past when literally athletic programs at our facility were unable to continue because of tight financial crisis. And our community stepped up to the plate to support the college in sustaining select athletic programs in the past. Also, on the other hand, as we've been a community in reinventing itself, the types of relationships that we've had with economic development through our career technical facility, through our relationship with Mike Mann, through the leadership with Dr. Burrow that we've experienced firsthand. We've been able to take a community's loss of over 7,000 jobs and bring back over half. And another thing that makes our community special, a place to be, that in spite of all the job loss, we've lost very few people in population. We're a very strong community. We support our people, we support our institutions. And we're a community where relationships matter. It's not just about people with titles, it's about how well we know each other. I give an example. This morning, as I was about to get in the shower around 6:00, 6:30, my phone rings. Who is it? This Mike Mann, it's our director of our career technical facility. Why is he calling? He's putting together projects to go out and promote the college. He's calling me to see if there's any assistance that the commission can provide on a local, small level to help him make that happen. How many places do you know of where a college collegiate staff member is going to pick up the phone, call an elected official before seven o'clock in the morning and not think anything about it? That's not the exception, that's the norm of the type of community we are. And those types of relationships, that type of resilience, that type of connectivity, that type of commitment and support, is the type of thing we think that we have to offer above and beyond a lot of things that Ms. Wright talked about in terms of the bricks and mortar opportunities, the facilities opportunities, and other forms of support that we tend to provide, not only up to this point, but also after the transition takes place. Thank you very much.
Tom Lambert, President, Russell Lands.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Tom Lambert, I'm president and CEO of Russell Lands. Company based in Alexander City, diversified company is based in Alexander City. We employ over 400 employees and have an additional 200 part-time employees. I'm also a lifelong resident of Alexander City. And I'm here to appeal to this board to make the decision to locate the main campus in Alexander City for the new regional two-year college that's being formed by the merger of Central Alabama Community College, Chattahoochee Valley, and Southern Union. I feel that Alexander City is the ideal location for the main campus because it's the most centrally located of the locations being considered within the 11th county area being served by the new regional college. Alex City has a long history of supporting Central Alabama Community Colleges through public and private donations in support of activities and programs. So already been mentioned about the Gateway program where 1.3 million dollars have been raised. It's a private foundation that provides scholarships to graduates of Benjamins College to go to CAC. This financial support from Gateway amounts to $70,000 a year in annual tuition revenue for the two-year college. In a recent meeting, Chancellor Heinrich stated that unlike a four-year college, the support of the community is critical to the success of the two-year college. Our support for CAC has been strong since the inception of that college in Alex City. It will continue to be strong in the future, even more so if the main campus is located in Alex City. Alexander City is a typical small Alabama town that the two-year college system was intended to serve. What a great message you will send throughout the 11th county region that the college intends to serve the residents of this, that region where they live and is not simply perceived as an urban-based satellite college to a major university. While Alexander City might be a small Alabama town in terms of population, it is very unique. We're a proud community that enjoys a rich heritage and an excellent reputation within our state. This reputation is well-deserved and is a result of many factors, some of them being it's a home and the former home and corporate headquarters for Russell Corporation for over 100 years. It's a home of It's the home of Central Alabama Community College. It has an excellent healthcare that's provided through Russell Medical Center, a regional hospital located in Elix City, an excellent K through 12 public school system. And finally, Elix City is the gateway to Lake Martin, a 44,000 acre man-made lake with over 75 miles of shoreline. Lake Martin provides residents of the Lake Martin area recreational opportunities that contribute to a quality of life in our area that we feel is unmatched in the state. While Elix City has been blessed to have many positive things going for it in the last 15 years, excuse me, while Elix City has been blessed to have many positive things going for it, the last 15 years has been tough on our community. Dramatic downsizing of Russell Corporation, the relocation of the corporate headquarters was hard on our community. The loss of 7,500 local jobs has tested the spirit and resolve of our community. But Elix Cityans have proven to be resilient through these tough times. We have raised millions of dollars from both private and public donations to fund economic development initiatives to bring new industry, commercial, and retail business to our community. Importantly, we consider our relationship with the two-year college to be one of the keys to our economic development efforts. I feel that the decision to locate the main campus of the new regional community college here could be a defining moment for Elix County City. If your goal as a board is to locate the main campus in the community where it would have the greatest positive impact, I strongly feel that the decision should be Elix County City. Thank you.
Senator Bobby Singleton. Representative John Knight. Representative Laura Hall. That cuts everybody off this side. The board would like to thank everyone that had comments today. We appreciate it very much. Appreciate your interest in the issues that come before the board and this input is well-received. Next item is item seven on the agenda, action items. Chancellor, it's item, recommend approval of seven, eight, items one and two, of both of which were discussed during last month's work session. We certainly have all subject matter experts here. Just one question before. Then we have before us items, action items seven, A, one and two. Item one is the double state community college purchase of computers for instructional administrative purposes. We discussed that at the February work session. Item seven, A, two is the community college system instructional site requests and terminations for 2016 and 17. Is there a motion to approve these two action items?
Motion to approve seven, A, one and two.
Been a motion from Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Fan Troy. Any discussion? Any questions for staff? There being, once again, we have before us, sign, item seven, A, one, which is purchase of computers for double state, seven, A, two, which is the instructional site request and termination for the whole system for 2016, 2017. There being no discussion, all those in favor approving these two items, please raise your hand. opposed. Motion carries. Next, items eight, I'd like to recommend approval of eight, A, one and two. Let's take those two items and just by way of explanation, Susan Price discussed these with the board during their meeting last month. We just emphasize the fact this is not the final step in consolidation. This is just one step along the way and this is the next required, required step. There are many more steps yet to, yet to go. But I would recommend approval of eight, A, one and two. We have before us a recommendation to approve items eight, A, one, which is a statement of intent to consolidate Alabama Southern, Jefferson Davis, and Fawcett State Community College. Eight, A, two is a statement of intent to consolidate Central Alabama, Shadow Hooch Valley, and Southern Union State Community College. Is there a motion for these two items?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items seven, eight, one and two.
Motion by Mr. Fan Troy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Just as a comment, I'd like to compliment Ms. Price again for the exceptional job she did laying out the consolidation process. And any of the communities or citizens that are interested in that process, I think that PowerPoint is available and if Chancellor, if we haven't made it available on our website, it would really be good and I'm sure we'd be happy to send it to anybody just to really clarify the process and we still have ways to go in this process and it won't be final until it's approved by the two accrediting agencies and then comes back to the board. And we have before us this motion to approve the statement of intent for consolidation of Alabama Southern, Jeff Davis, and Fawcett State Community College, and also item two, the statement of intent to consolidate Central Alabama, Shadow Hooch Valley, and Southern Union Community College. There being no further discussion, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, A, three, has, 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 just is more informational for the board and I'm just really here to inform you that I've received formal notification from Dr. McGalton of her intent to retire at the end of the year. And so there's no board action necessary there, it's just for informational purposes.
Once again, I'll ask our parliamentarian, Mr. Br- Orion, no actions required. Chancellor.
Very good. Yes, I've got a couple of items that I'd like to, I'd like to cover. The one I'd like to start with is to thank Dr. Carloix and her team once again for the lilies that you see out in front of you. There is one for, one for each of you. And Dr. Carloix, I don't want to put you on the spot. Can you tell us again, these are grown, I think, in your, is this part of a, part of a nexus?
Our average is some four cultural programs units have two mass growing targets a year. One is the poinsettias at Christmas time and the other is Easter lilies. So we do more poinsettias than we do Easter lilies, but the cause we are, according to our policy, obviously not able to compete with local suppliers. We decorate those states by giving those to you, but they are more of our students and we're delighted and hope that you enjoy the sending the message of Easter as we attend the meeting.
Thank you. Would also like to take just a moment to introduce three new employees here at the system office. Tony White, Adult Education Specialist. Welcome. Wendy Perry Roberts, Adult Education Specialist. Welcome to you. Art Rousseau, Temporary Assistant Director, Career and Technical Programs and Workforce. Welcome to you. You're welcome. Okay, very good. Diana Williams, are you here? Yes, we, I think we introduced you a month ago when you were out. We probably had you out training someplace. So she is Administrative Assistant for the Fiscal Division. Welcome to you as well. I do need to inform the board that the developmental education update is going to be delayed until April. I received notification very early this morning that Dr. Robinson, Robinson has fallen ill and she just cannot even be here today. So certainly will keep you updated on her condition, but look forward to you hearing for updates. There are a lot of exciting things happening in that, in this whole developmental area and for that matter, between the partnership with K-12, I think working together, we're making some grand strides, but we'll look forward to updating you about that in, in I'd like to call on Jimmy Baker. I'd like him to give you a brief legislative update. A lot, as you might expect, has been happening across the street and I think he can give some balance and information.
Dr. Chancellor, I'm thinking I've got to practice something we do on a regular basis when you're dealing with the legislature. You just call on somebody, it's time for you to perform. And I'm going to ask Annette to come. Annette Fundabert, you're familiar with her because you get correspondence from her. She is my right hand in the legislative process and sometimes I think she's both hands. But I've got to let her kind of brief you because I know some of you are thinking or looking or talking about going across the street and we'd like to let you know kind of what's going on. Now, the budget bill, you've received copies of those today and I think it's a blessing that that budget contains a 4% pay increase for our employees and schools across the state and we're looking forward to that moving on through the legislative process. I think that one aspect will stay in the budget bill. Some others may shift around, but I think that's pretty safe. So Annette, tell them where we are with our House bill.
Is it okay if I start with the Senate bill? Thank you. Thank you so much for your support. I appreciate all of your emails. I appreciate the letters that you have written to both the chairpersons of the Senate and the House committees. They've been very surprised to get those, those letters of support. Not that it's not support, but they, they do not always get those letters, so they appreciate that. As you know from my correspondence earlier, the Senate bill will be in committee today at 12:30. That is in State House, room 727. And Senator Brubaker had a public hearing on the, the bill last week where the chancellor spoke and Dr. Claber from Calhoun Community College spoke in our favor. It went over very well. There are not many questions, although there have been some concerns about the Students First. So we have had some discussions about us being out from under the Students First Act. So we've had some discussions of that and there's going to be a substitute offer today in regards to that. So you, if you go and you can attend, you will hear that Senator Trip Pittman, who is the sponsor of the bill, will offer a substitute in that regard. Tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, the House Companion Bill to our Board Bill will be up in the House Education Policy Committee under Representative Collins' direction. It also had a public hearing last week where the Chancellor and Dr. Claber spoke on, on your behalf and shared your support. There again, a substitute will be offered in, in support of changing that from the Students First section. Today at 1:00 on the House floor will be the budget. It is up on the, first on the special order today. So once they approve that special order, House Bill 117, which you have a copy of the, the long bill as well as the work spreadsheet there, and we'll be glad to address any questions that you have regarding the Board Bill, the changes, the two committees, or the Board, the House budget being up today on the House floor. I think the intent is to get it out of, off the floor today, so we'll just have to wait and see how that, how that goes. But they certainly do have your support, your letters of support, and any support that you can lend our way today, I think will be very helpful. Any other questions?
What was about the Senate meeting?
The Senate meeting today is at 12:30. And I have prepared talking points for all of you if you're interested. I have those with me. They are not in your seat.
Annette, I would like to get a set of the talking points. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll just do the first. The student first issue really came out prior to the beginning of the legislative session from a draft of a bill that the ProTiam had prepared called the Raze Bill. Since that time, that particular bill, it had us in the bill. We're out of the bill. But since that time, that bill has gone through a lot of iterations. It's kind of now, I think, called the Prep Bill maybe? Well, whatever. But it's full of a lot of things that we didn't want to be a part of. As a board, you are almost in the middle, I think, Mr. Fan Troy, of developing board policy. We would be in a better, much better position once we have policy to say, this is a policy which we will implement, instead of just saying, we'll do this. That doesn't sell real strong in the process. So it's not that we don't want to move away and move to a situation so that the board controls the employment process. We intend to do that, it's just going to take us longer than we thought. Any questions? You see why I called on Annette all along?
Let me say a couple of words about policy and policy development. Say this more than once, we're going to have a much more involved conversation during the work session about, about this, but just kind of set the stage where this has been and where it's gone. First of all, the Board Policy Subcommittee, made up of Ron Fan Troy, who's the chair, Susan Floyd, and Crystal Brown, who are members. They've, we, to date, we have broad-based input into the policy development process. Like this is a process that's gone on before this board was seated. We were already looking at the policies. We, we worked very closely with, we, we look at experts out of AUM, Auburn Montgomery, who worked with committees from across the, across the system, across the state. And so we, we had invested many, many, many hours into this, into this process for this board to sit. But since then, the Board Policy Committee was, of course, appointed by our, our Vice President and they have been very involved with the development of, evaluation of current policy, specifically in, in three areas. And I'm probably using a category some of you might not use, but one of the areas that we focused on is really discussing and updating each other about past policy work, well aware of, of the foundational work that's occurred. We then had discussions about current system needs and corresponding policy development. There have been changes that have occurred through the, through the years, certainly since our, the, the old state board policies, which of course are not in effect, were, were developed. And then we, we've established some timelines for discussing and approving board policies. And let me make it really clear that we're not going to ask you to approve any policies until you're comfortable with those. But we do have a rough timeline for, for moving ahead. Now, I, I think that the conversations about board policies have been most robust, I guess is the word, as they relate to a number of important areas. Number one, certainly the policies affecting our new board and the board change. Those are critically important. Obviously, we've had SACS involved in that, but we've had some pretty good discussions about board and board change and how that will impact the policies. Secondly, policies that directly impact SAC COC and, and other accrediting agencies that impact our colleges. Obviously, those are paramount, paramount importance and we need to make sure that as we develop policies, they are in, in alignment with our creditors. The third area are those policies that directly impact consolidations and the consolidations that are going on. And we've had some pretty good discussions about that as well. And then fourthly, and we have a lot of discussions about, about this, we have some of the old policies that we've looked at that are clearly outdated. They no longer make any, make any sense. And, and we would expect that a good number of those would be deleted and, and probably replaced with policies that make more, make more sense. replaced with policies that make more, make more sense. So those four areas have certainly been the focus of, of the discussions that, that we've been, we've been having. As I said just a moment ago, this after afternoon during the work session, our Chair Ron, our Chair, Policy Chair Ron Fantroy will lead this board in a policy development discussion. And I certainly will work with him and, and, and support that, that discussion. We may very well look to approve some of these policies in our next board meeting if the board is comfortable with those at the work session. Again, there's no, we're not going to, we're not going to push anything, but I just throw that out because I think it is important that we have a, a good discussion this afternoon. I think you're all well aware of the fact that we have a mini retreat scheduled for the April work session. This will be an extended work session roughly from 1:00 until 5:00. And during that time, we'll have again another opportunity to discuss this important area and, and workforce further. So there'll be two, two areas we'll be targeting. Policy and workforce will be, will be key to that, that discussion. So in, in any, I, I certainly look forward to our discussion this afternoon about policy, but I thought it was important just to summarize where we've been and where we're going. So certainly be glad to address any specific questions that the board members have, but as I said, we'll have ample opportunity this afternoon. Anything else? I don't have anything else. Do you want to talk a little more?
Very good. Board, we will, we'll probably have lunch a little early. If it will offer, give us, we'll finish lunch early and maybe you can go to the Senate Committee around about 12:12, take attention, and get over there for, for the legislation. We, Chancellor's supportive of lunch a little bit early. Is there any, any other, anything, any trustees have anything else to come before the board today? Once again, I want to thank everyone for their presence here. We appreciate your interest in the Alabama Community College system and the issues that are brought before this board. We appreciate those citizens that come from other parts of the state to give remarks. It's much appreciated. We really appreciate the presence of the press and thank you for, for what you bring to the process and thanks for everybody being here. If there's nothing else to come before, before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And the motions are second. Are you in discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.